Have received word of not receiving state funding that we were slated to receive that would go towards raises for our employees due to revenue forecast not being met at the state level. This item is just to give you some additional information of how we were able to cover that deficit in our budget to make our, to meet our commitment of providing raises and targeted salary increases to our employees. So the amount that we were supposed to receive from the state was $171,602. We ended up, and as I told you all during the summer, keep track almost daily of retirements, resignations, attrition, as well as the differences between newly hired staff and staff that have left us. And we ended up at this point with a savings and personnel cost of about $490,000. That includes some positions that we did not fill, that we reduced from the budget as a result of us merging the middle school and the junior high school. Of that 490,000, 298,829 was the amount that we returned to the Board of Supervisors to make the first installment of our commitment to reduce our budget by $650,000. We then had additional funds in this category and were able to cover the loss of state revenue of $171,602 through the balance that we had of over $191,000. So we were able to cover that and to meet our commitment of providing our employees with raises. This does cut us a little close when it comes to personnel. That is something that because it's a, an estimate of personnel costs when we build our budget and we know that we're going to have some attrition, this is using almost all of that attrition. We do anticipate, based on our initial enrollment numbers, and Dr. Amahundro will talk about this later, having additional ADM that will bring us additional funding from the state as well so that we will have funds over what we had budgeted. So I just wanted to give you that quick update and do that for the public as well so they can see exactly where this funding came from and what category we're taking it. I'll take any questions that you have or if you have more detailed, specific questions, I'm sure Mr. Jones can answer, help me answer those as well.
Questions from the board on this?
I think we're in a really fortunate position. I know some of our colleagues on other boards are not being as fortunate.
Okay. Do we know what the county's going to do for the county employees?
I have not had that discussion with Ms. Wyler, so I can't speak to that, no sir.
Okay.
I can find out.
You talked about being close. How close is close?
Well, currently, just, I mean, we're fine in all of our budgeted line items and we still have a surplus in our personnel costs. It's just not where it was. So we have about $20,000 is what we have now for our personnel costs over what we budgeted.
And we're not anticipating having to hire any additional staff to go with the additional students you're talking about?
Correct. That was, the additional staff that we hired in August was factored into this funding formula, so we're current, we don't anticipate having to hire additional staff at this time, no sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next item is an item for the school board to consider. This is typically the time that we look at advisory boards, specifically, in this case, the two governor schools that we participate in, the Math Science Innovation Center, our new relationship with Code RVA and other than school board advisory committees. We have it on here as an item for discussion and then are looking for, if it's a pleasure of the board to approve those appointments at the seven o'clock meeting tonight. We've highlighted who is the board member that's currently serving in these capacities and will certainly leave it up to the board to discuss if there's wants to be some trading going on or people who wish not to serve in that current role and if there are any other changes that need to be made.
Okay. Anybody looking to trade up their representation for the upcoming year?
I just have one comment since I did step up and take the Code RVA. I mean, my Maggie Walker duties take as much or more time than this serving on this board does. It is a huge commitment. And I also serve on the Title I Parent Advisory Committee in addition to the other two school boards that I'm now serving on. So I don't want to give it up, but it's something that if someone else would step up and take that, I would appreciate it.
Anyone interested in Code RVA?
No, not Code RBA.
You don't want?
Title I.
Oh, Title I, I'm sorry.
The Title I, yeah. I'm willing to do the Code RBA because I realize that's a daytime meeting and it's going to be after Maggie Walker.
Okay.
So the Title I Parent Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Which is a great committee and it meets four times a year at night and they do fun things.
Okay.
Title I is great. It's really a great.
Okay. Well, as, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rick. Well, I was going to say to throw in the pot, I'd like to stay with Gifted Advisory and also switch if Mr. Walters is willing to, I'd like to serve on the Special Ed Advisory as well.
That's, that's fine. We chatted briefly about that and I have no objection to that. I've enjoyed serving with that committee, but if you have an interest, I certainly would like to see you do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Walters, does that leave you open to pick up Title I?
It seems to leave me with just the Math Science Innovation Center. And one of the things that we did discuss, Mr. Chairman, is that is one of the boards that we do not have a designated alternate. And Ms. Emo did express the fact that she would be willing to serve as our designated alternate to the Math Science Innovation Center. And she has attended one of those meetings for me in the past when I was unavailable. So if it would be the agreement of the board, I'd like to have her designated in that capacity as we have for some of our other standing assignments.
Okay. I have no objections to that. If any of the other board members concur?
I don't have an objection. I will say that I think that all of us ought to take a turn on Governor's School Boards and now the Code RBA Board because I think it is, is your programs that we participate in and we've got a number of students involved in, I think it's, it's good for us to know how those schools operate. And so I just think, I recommend it to anybody that wants to do it. I'm on, I'm at the Government School, been there now for five years, I guess. And I enjoy it, but I'm certainly willing to share it with somebody if somebody would like to do it.
That, I didn't know. The impression was when I was elected that you guys wanted your governor schools and so that they were off limits. So now it's changed.
One may be off limits, but.
Yeah, I kind of, I really love Maggie Walker.
You really like your Maggie Walker.
I do love my Maggie Walker.
Well, what is Code RBA, how many meetings is that and when is that?
Four, four times.
It's four, currently the board is slated to meet four times a year. They are, they meet in the afternoons after Maggie Walker at the CTA, CTA Hall building the old Cloverhill High School in Chesterfield off 360.
So, Ms. Ayers, that's the same four times a year as your Maggie Walker?
Maggie Walker meets 12 times a year in addition to three or four times during the summer.
Okay.
We still kind of have a tentative opening for Title I. So is anybody willing to do Title I this year?
Todd DeFaulding goes to the chairman.
Is that the way that works, huh?
I think it is.
Mr. Chairman, I would be interested in the Career and Technical Education Committee that you currently serve on if you'd like to try the Title I.
Okay, well, I can, I can do that. I'll swap you.
Okay.
All right.
So that fills the Title I vacancy?
And Ms. Ayers, that gets you off the hook for that one?
Probably still come to their fun events, but.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. It's all or nothing, I'm sorry.
I think they would still have me.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and tentatively have those changes down.
All right, then we can just vote on that in a motion at seven o'clock meeting then since it's settled.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. All right.
Thank you. The next item is to receive information. This is another item that we have up for a vote this evening. And this is approving a resolution to request additional appropriation for the Powhatan High School chiller replacement. We've gone over this information a couple times at our last meeting as well as through some other communications that we've had. We did place a rental unit at the school prior to its opening and the opening week activities. That cost is cited in the boilerplate at 19,845 per month. That unit is working well and is cooling that area sufficiently, which is all the common areas. If you think about Main Street, it's everything right of Main Street as you're walking into the high school. We have made a decision to move forward with purchasing and have signed a purchase order for the new chiller. We never did get a firm resolution to whether the repair could be done or how long it could be done of the barrel that was leaking. And then we have had some additional information that this is the best route that we would be able to go to ensure long-term conditioned space in that high school. I did want to bring up a couple of things if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to, some things that I've heard in the community that I want to bring up and then be happy to answer any questions that the board has. There seems to be some questions about whether this was a surprise to the, to us, the staff and the school board, and that it wasn't something that we weren't planning for. And I would point to the fact that it was in our facility study that we did in 2014 specifically stated that this unit was nearing the end of its life and needed to be replaced within five to eight years. It was something that was slated for, to go on to our CIP in 2022. It was not on our last year's CIP because that's a five-year CIP that ended in 2021. So we didn't include it in the CIP. But it wasn't something that we weren't planning for. It's just that the unit failed sooner than anybody anticipated because of mechanical failures. The other issue that has come to light that I wanted to address is this, the idea that we could have purchased insurance that would have covered the cost of this unit replacement. We have investigated that. We've spoken with Bay Corp. who handles our insurance. They have looked into it and said, this is mechanical failure. This is just like if a heat pump goes out in your home. If it struck by lightning or if it catches off, tree falls on it, that's something insurance covers, but not just mechanical failure through time or those types of things. So there is no additional insurance that we could have purchased based on our conversations with our insurance carrier as well as looking and speaking with architectural firms and other HVAC firms around the region to ask them if this was something that we missed because it was something that I know a couple of community members had spoken to board members about. So I think we've done our due diligence. It is unfortunate that the unit failed earlier than was anticipated, but sometimes those things happen and that's why we've taken the course of action that we have.
Thank you. Dr. Jones? Comments from the board?
So $300,000 total is, is the cost of the new unit plus the rental, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we have a little bit of discount on the rental because we're buying it from the same, and the warranty on this is going to be, what?
What, Mr. Wilson, do you mind coming up? I know it's two years on something and one year on something, but I don't.
The way the contract reads, we get a one-year warranty on the chiller and then we purchased an additional warranty for the compressors for years two through five. So we'll get five-year warranty on the compressors.
And has the company guaranteed the turnaround time for the new unit itself so that the rental costs couldn't potentially go above the figure we're approving?
They have not guaranteed it. It's estimated right now that November 1st would be the date. It's being built in Stanton. If any of y'all are interested in going up, I can arrange a trip and you can go watch it being built.
I just know enough about the contracts to be dangerous. Are there LDs that we can claim if they do go beyond their, their promise date that?
We do not have LDs in there.
Okay.
The eight weeks was an estimate. And they made it clear to us that this was an estimate, that they thought they could get the chiller built within eight weeks, but they didn't give us any guarantees.
Okay.
But that's the best information that we have at this time.
And that chiller, does it heat and cool? Is it just cool?
Just cooling.
So hopefully by November, we would not need it that much. But you don't know, but look at today, it's middle of September and it's 95 degrees. But hopefully.
I don't know that they really ever turn off that much, even in the cooler months because you're always generating heat in the buildings. I'm just.
Yeah, maybe.
As, as a, as a board member, I'm just uncomfortable about the, the potential, you know, incurring additional funds of rental costs, but I don't know, I can't, I can't outthink the people writing the contract to know if that equipment is typically on time or not. I have, I have equipment in the works now that is delayed two, three weeks, no fault of mine.
Right.
And, you know, I'm having to convey that to the customer, so.
At this point in time, we're as confident as we can be, I would say, to having that November 1st delivery. The local Daikon representative has not raised any flags as far as any kind of delays or whatnot. I think they were actually anxious to get a contract for the, the manufacturing plant in Stanton.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. And, and these are questions that I have been asked and I would just, I think this is an opportunity for either for you or Mr. Wilson to get a chance to publicly address some of the things. One of the questions that I've been asked, Mr. Wilson or Dr. Jones, is the, the process of selecting the manufacturer for this piece of equipment. Can you talk a little bit, either you or Mr. Wilson, about, did we utilize multiple bidders? Did we go to multiple vendors? A little bit about that publicly?
Sure. I'll let Mr. Wilson address that.
We did not, that, we considered that an emergency replacement, so we did not put it out on the open market for, say, train or carrier to come in and bid that. It's also important to note that the McQuay Daikon chiller is, goes hand in hand with our controls that we have in the building, the Alapin. Train and carrier can operate off of those, but the McQuay is set up specifically for that type of control. So I think, number one, from a time standpoint, we got an advantage to it. The biggest factor in my mindset was you don't find a 370-ton chiller sitting on a trailer right around the corner when you need it. And we had that back-to-school night within 48 hours of the failure and we were able to get that back up and operating.
So you're talking about the availability of the rental unit that we're using, that we're temporarily using?
Correct. And then the advantage of getting the discount, 25% discount off of the $19,000 per month rental on it. So we're actually paying $14,500, I believe is the number per month for the rental, for 28 days is what they consider a month.
I, I think the biggest factor in my mind was the fact that the entire system is Daikon designed with the other equipment and knowing how it interacts with our controls, it seemed like it was prudent to move forward with something that fit seamlessly. There are train and carriers, Mr. Wilson said, could have come in and done that, but given the time constraints and given the nature of making sure that we have a seamless system that hopefully would last and, and work well, seemed like the prudent move to make.
And I would imagine that there was, there was some steps that were taken to determine that the amount that was quoted was a reasonable cost for the item that was purchased.
Yes. Yes. We did look into that, Mr. Wilson.
They have a, and I don't want to, I know Mr. McFarlane here is quoting, but there's a, a system out there where they can bid under state contracts. And I'm 95% sure that they, Daikon had a state contract that we could have piggybacked on with that price. So in other words, it just wouldn't they, let's reach out here and get these guys while they're down and throw them a high number. They, they used off of that contract and I can verify that for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walters.
All right, I have a couple more if you don't mind. It's, it's also been, I've also been asked if, if we were doing all of the required proper maintenance for the unit and what we were doing, and I would imagine Mr. Wilson is the right person to speak to that, if he could talk a little bit about what the maintenance was like for that piece of equipment for us there at the high school.
I'd be glad to. The maintenance on that chiller is actually very minimal. The only thing required from a maintenance standpoint on an annual basis is cleaning the coils. And that's just Mr. Grady and his crew warns the HVAC supervisor. They do that, is it twice a year warrant or once a year? Once a year. And that's been done since that chiller was started. Also, the, all the lubrications, oiling and whatnot, it's self-lubricating, there's none of that. I've got a copy of the, the Daikon general maintenance.
And I wanted to say, interject here, that I was asked by several people for the reports as well. The public is interested in knowing if we have a maintenance yearly checklist or a chiller log, if we have water treatment reports for that chiller, and if we have oil sample reports for that chiller.
We've got the water treatment logs for the, or the paperwork for all the water treatments going back till when the chiller was started up at the beginning of the building, from 2003. We've got maintenance logs with McQuay of all the work that they've done on that chiller. We do not have any oil testing done on that chiller.
It's not.
Excuse me?
It's not.
Okay.
Mr. Gray, do you mind coming up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, for the lubrication on the chiller, and this is right off of the system maintenance from the owner's manual, says no routine lubrication is required on ALS units. Fan motor bearings are permanently lubricated, no further lubrication is required. Excessive fan motor bearing noise is an indication of a potential bearing failure. And then it goes on to state that compressor oil must be brand XYZ from McQuay. Care must be taken to minimize exposure of the oil to air when changing oil into the system.
And what page is that on of the manual, Mr. Wilson?
That's the front page of it.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. 75.
75. Okay. Of course, so I don't have that one here. I do have, I was given this today, the same, I believe, as yours, McQuay. It's a Installation, Operation and Maintenance Manual.
Which one?
Which one do you have? Is it ALS chiller?
Air-cooled screw compressor chiller, ALS 141C through 218C.
It's not that. This was a 370.
I'm sorry?
This was a 370?
370. Okay, and where would I see that?
Top right hand corner of the page.
Okay, so how many air-cooled screw compressor chillers are there?
I really couldn't speak on that, ma'am.
At the high school or you talking about in?
As far as manufactured, there's like a lot.
Okay. Okay. Well, I had requested the logs because the public wants to know, the public wants to know if we are maintaining our, our machinery, our chillers, for example. I have, I was born in Detroit and the Motor City and I needed to know how to take care of my car before I was allowed to drive. I needed to know how to do the minimal maintenance, which was changing the tire and checking the oil, and to know when it needed more attention from, say, a garage. Okay, so what the public is wanting from us is to know that we are maintaining these things because what's out there is people think that this has not been done and that this is way too soon for this machinery to have broken down.
And Ms. Emo, Mr. Wilson's brought those logs and we'll be happy to provide them to all the board members to show that the maintenance was completed for this unit since its inception.
Okay, well, I was told in the email that there was no, we didn't do water treatments.
That's, that's totally wrong, ma'am. For over 11 years as an employee, the, one of the first things I did was got water treatment. And it's been done religiously every month.
And I'm sorry if I put that in an email to you, I must have misunderstood. I thought that you were referring to a different type of chiller in your question.
And the contractor we use is Chemtrix and I'll be glad to have a reference.
We do have a contractor that comes and does that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that is the, that is the sheet I would like to see because you're right, Dr. Jones, that it says that we don't have water treatment reports or oil sample reports because it's a water tower cooled chiller.
Right, when you ask your questions, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Nope, you go ahead.
It's, we do not have, the only thing we have water cooled in the county is Powhatan Elementary and their water source heat pumps. The, the high school's a air-cooled chiller. As far as water treatment, the guy comes every month, he tells me if I need to add chemicals, he tells me if he don't, he tells me if I didn't have a leak somewhere. By the next month, he comes, it's fixed, the water treatment's added to the system. That happens every month if we have to add chemicals.
So we do have a maintenance contract with?
Chemtrix.
Chemtrix for all of our chillers?
Yes, ma'am. Every closed-loop system we have, chillers, boilers, everything. That is a dire necessary thing. I mean, I've seen systems fail completely because of lack of chemical treatment and I don't want that happening on my watch.
Okay, because that's what I have understanding is that it does take water, or water treatments. Okay, what was the other one, the oil?
As far as oil samples, ma'am, the only reason I would even consider them, taking oil samples for acid. An acid sample was taken and it showed up acid and that reflects that there was moisture in the system which helped reflect that the chiller barrel went bad. As far as taking monthly, annually, oil checks, samples for any reason, there's no reason, even in their manual. There's nothing combustible in that system to corrode the oil. The inside of that system should be as clean as a surgical room floor. So there's no real reason for the oil to break down.
Okay.
I don't know what, who you're getting your questions from, but that's just wrong.
I'm getting questions from the people of Powhatan County who want to make sure that we are spending our money wisely and we are maintaining what we have. So that's why I'm asking the questions because I have gotten a lot of calls and people stopping me, asking me. So I would like to get the whole thing out and understand it all and let the public understand it too so we can move on.
Believe me, I would too. I really would.
And Ms. Emo, I guess my suggestion would be if you've received technical questions to this extent, then certainly if you would direct them, they can speak with Russell and he could provide technical answers for them that may be able to answer the questions that they have specifically. That may be something that would be helpful. If it's another HVAC professional or somebody that's an engineer or has specific knowledge and thinks that something was not done correctly, perhaps by providing a direct link to Mr. Wilson or Mr. Grady, they can have a conversation and resolve that.
Ms. Emo, I, I too got some questions from a constituent who was in this field for quite a number of years and he very quickly got beyond my ability to answer his, his questions to his satisfaction and it was obvious, it was in my best interest to put him directly in touch with Mr. Wilson because I, I couldn't satisfy him, you know, through, through assertions or, or. or, or knowledge of the systems that I could answer his questions. So I, I don't want to get into a, a blame game or, or looking for who did what wrong. I'd rather get the constituents directly in touch with the experts, and, and I put my faith in, in that they can, they can take care of that equipment.
Well, Mr. Conca, I'm not trying to blame anybody. I am just trying to get answers for these people's questions because they want to know. They want to know that all of our money is being spent wisely and that we, so we can put as much money as we can into the classroom. And when I saw this about not having any reports, and then I get sent this, I'm like, well, you know, there's logs right here, maintenance logs, their schedules, whatever. This is the kind of information that we need to get out to the public, that we have, what was it, Chemtrix?
Yes, ma'am.
Chemtrix that comes, whatever, once a month or whatever, and did do this. We need to get this out to let them know. And if they still have questions, I will be happy to send them your way, Mr. Russell. I mean, Mr. Wilson, excuse me.
Any other questions on chillers from the board? Ms. Walters?
I do, if you don't mind, if I could just finish, if that's okay, I just have one or two more. First, let me, let me thank both of you for coming up and answering our questions, because as Mr. Conca said, my, my knowledge about chillers and HVAC does not extend beyond the little gauge on the wall. That's where I go with it. So thank you both. So, and I, and I apologize for this as well, I didn't hear you say what your name was when you came up.
My name is Warren Grady, I'm the HVAC supervisor.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I've been employed eleven years.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you both for what you do. So the last question that I had is, Mr. Wilson, what I think I heard you saying, and Mr. Grady as well, is that right, Mr. Grady?
Yes, sir.
What I think I heard both of you saying is that at this, that through the life of this chiller, the school system properly maintained the device, and that we have satisfied all of the maintenance requirements that the manufacturer asks with this device. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir, it is.
And do we have the records to prove that?
We do, we have some paper copies, and I have links to the websites of Chemtrix where you can access all of the logs of Warren, when, we moved, not to digress a whole lot, but when, he had an office at the junior high school, and when he moved out of there and moved into Pocahontas Elementary School, he purged, which I encouraged him to do, and as a part of his purging, there was a stack of Chemtrix papers about this big that got purged as a part of that process. But Chemtrix has electronic copies. I'll get you the link and welcome, and, and I appreciate your vote of confidence for what Warren and I do. I'm confident in my mind that we have not been negligent in maintaining any of the equipment in the division here, not only the chiller, but any of the equipment. I'll stand firm on that. And I take great pride in it, and I know Warren and his crew does also.
And Mr. Wilson, what I'll say is, the reason I ask you those questions is not just, have I had a lot of questions from the public, and, and generally, the questions have been very, very, they simply want to know the answers about it, because it's such a large purchase, we're doing three hundred thousand dollars. And what I wanted to do is give you an opportunity to talk about this publicly, and to talk about the fact that, as you just said, the maintenance has been done, and you say, you have told us, and I'm sure we do have the records to, to verify that. So that way, the people that have expressed concerns about whether that is the case or not, we have those records, you have those records to document what is taking place.
And if I could add too, that's exactly it, Mr. Wilson. I, you know, all I'm doing is getting the calls and relaying what they're saying to me. You know, thank you for keeping good records, and I look forward to getting that link or whatever and passing it on. Thank you.
And, and I just want to kind of conclude with saying, I appreciate what Dr. Jones and the staff have done to make the school usable for our students, for the public at night. There is rarely a night at the high school when something doesn't take place in that building, in the cafeteria, the gymnasium, somewhere in that facility. It is an integral part of our community, and I appreciate what the staff has done to make it usable for our community. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
One, one comment if I can, Mr. Conca.
Sure.
I think this goes to point out an important piece of our budget, as we build our budget from year to year. You know, people question our personnel and question where we have, why we have people in maintenance and why we do different things, and here's one of the prime reasons we do it. And we've said this time and time again as a board, that we would rather spend money in a proactive manner to prevent things from happening whenever we can, rather than be reactive. And, and I think our staff has been doing that. I, I feel good about what we've done. I think it's fine to question and ask if people have that information, I don't have any problem with that. But I, but I do want to, I'll join in, in Mr. Wal, with Mr. Walters in complimenting you for what you're doing. I don't know that, I've always been in school systems that was, were as proactive about taking care of expensive equipment as this school system has been. So thank you.
Thank you.
Same goes for me. Thank you all very much for everything you do.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Next item is to receive information. We noticed early this week or end of last week that we have a school board meeting, meeting on Election Day, which is probably not a great time to be meeting. So we'd like to, and again, this is up for a vote this evening, but we'd like to suggest moving our November eighth, two thousand and sixteen meeting from Election Day to November fifteenth, the following Tuesday. And we also did not have published our reorganization meeting at the beginning of two thousand and seventeen, and would like to suggest, like our other meetings, that that's the second week in January, on January tenth, two thousand and seventeen, and wanted to bring this up in the workshop to see if there were any concerns or conflicts, and if so, if we need to look at another date, or if the board was okay meeting on November eighth on Election Day.
Comments from the board?
My preference would be to change it away from November eighth.
Mine too.
All right, Mr. Cole?
It really would not make a difference to me. I plan to vote early that day anyway, but it don't make a difference to me. But the fifteenth is fine, it's, it's the day before the school board conference, but it shouldn't conflict with that.
Ms. Emo?
Yes, I, I vote to change it.
Okay, well, we'll change it then.
My, really, my first concern when I saw that was that that would put us so late having a meeting, but we don't have a meeting to end.
Right.
So it actually divides the month pretty nicely for us to have a, a meeting at that time. So I support that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one additional question?
Okay.
I noticed that we don't have any meetings designated as joint meetings with the board of supervisors. And we did discuss that in the past, that we were going to continue the practice of having joint meetings with the board of supervisors. And if, if none of these are joint meetings, I would like to ask that we pursue that option with the chairman of the, your, your chairman.
I will take that up with Mr. Melton.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Next item is, this is a revision to our two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen course guide. I think the school board, I know the school board received an email from a constituent, a community member about GPAs, and we had put into the thought in our grading committee that met a year before last to talk about how we would be calculating grades, had come up with the idea of starting the high school GPA in high school when students enter the ninth grade, as opposed to calculating middle school grades as part of a high school GPA. There's a couple reasons that came forward from the committee and from other research and what other districts do. Number one is, we're asking middle school students to challenge themselves to take a high school credit course if they so choose and if they feel like they're ready for it. And by doing that, they're challenging themselves academically. And we don't want them to feel fearful that by doing that, it's impacting their high school GPA that could follow them as they're applying to colleges. So that's the primary reason. It's also a matter of fairness and equity. If a student isn't ready for a high school credit course in middle school, then they're not placed at a disadvantage by students who were ready, having additional courses to factor into their GPA. So the idea from the committee was that they would start as freshman year, as students are entering the ninth grade, and their GPA would be figured from that time. So that somehow didn't make it into the course guide, and the language wasn't changed. So we're asking tonight for that language to be changed, to provide the initial intent of the committee, and as well as what other districts in RICO and, and others that offer high school courses do, to start the high school GPA in the ninth grade year.
So did we go back and change it for those students?
Yeah, we will, and this is actually a good time, as we're moving to our new SIS, we would have a new transcript system, or be using Power School to update our transcript system. Right now, students do not see their GPA, their official GPA, until their junior year. So the students who it would impact, which is fresh, current freshmen and sophomores, haven't seen their GPA. Now, they may have figured their own GPA and done the math themselves, but in terms of when we offer an official GPA, it doesn't happen until the junior year. So we would go back and recalculate that so that when students first saw their official GPA, it would be correct.
Do, do the changes that are outlined in this, do they address all of the concerns that were brought by, and this is behind the scenes, I apologize, but there was a constituent that did a lot of this, this analysis of, of his, his own son.
Right.
And, you know, I, of course, forwarded this on to, to Dr. Jones. So is, is this addressing those issues?
Yes, my communication with him was that this would address his concerns and would alleviate the concerns he had about his child being penalized because he made a B in eighth grade on a high school credit course.
And, and in, in, in moving that forward, do the changes have the capability of negatively impacting any students who have taken these courses ahead?
It could. If a student took several high school courses in middle school and made all As on them, that it could negatively impact their GPA, yes. But again, those students haven't seen their GPA because the official GPA doesn't happen until their junior year.
Okay.
But yes, that is a fair point, that could happen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the course guide?
Just a comment, I think we do need to make this known, and especially as students get ready to start registering for classes in, in, in spring. But I think we also need to make sure our freshmen and sophomores at, at Powhatan High School know it. You know, you can look at it from both sides of the coin, these students do take the initiative and do take the classes. You don't want to penalize them, but those students that got As, it does, it is a benefit to them. But I, I think this is the fairest way to go and to look at it overall, because obviously, if I've taken six courses in the high school, any course that I take at the high school has less weight at this point, at the, at the, in terms of whether, if I do poorly on it, then it's not going to hurt me as badly as if I do, if I start my GPA in the ninth grade year. So I'm, I'm in favor of the change. I have, you know, I, I think it's, you know, it's a change that's needed, we have to do it at some point. So I'm okay with it.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the last item I had for our workshop is just a summary. The, we do have an agenda item to vote swimming as a VHSL sport. We, that request came from patrons who came and spoke at board meetings, and those community members have brought this forward. I have been in contact with the YMCA. There is lane space for us to use at no cost, which is a huge advantage that a lot of localities don't have. They're paying for lane space, which is the main cost of offering swimming or, or swimmers competing. It's also at a time when there are a few other sports in session. Season runs from end of January through the beginning of March. It's a short season, and we do have some experienced competitive swimming coaches that have volunteered to help start the team and to grow this sport. So we did hold a student interest meeting last week at Powhatan High School. We had twenty-three students who came forward and expressed an interest in swimming. The coach, Mrs. Malkerson, whose husband came and spoke to us, said that she knew fifteen of them had a competitive swimming background, and it swam competitively for one of the clubs, the neighborhood or the area clubs, and felt like that was a, a very good number to start off. And so we are recommending that we do move forward and add swimming as a VHSL sport this year. The only cost that we can see right now, because students supply their own equipment or bathing suits, and the only cost that we can see right now is trans, some transportation costs, but they don't compete in that many meets. And depending on the numbers that qualify for competitions, it could be personal transportation that, that's taken, depending on the number. So we don't see this having, it'll be a minimal budgetary impact.
Questions or comments from the board?
I'm, I'm pleased to hear the number that turned out at the student interest meeting that you had.
I was pleasantly surprised.
Yes, sir. Very much so. And will we be, is the discussion to field both a, a boys and girls team?
It would be a co-ed team, so they would compete in meets either as female and, and male team, but they would practice together and, and work together as one team.
Okay. I also concur, I mean, I support this, and, and I'm going to ask the board, if the board supports this, everything that I've read about swimming says the earlier that someone gets involved in it, the better. And I would encourage the board and, and the school system to look into, instead of swimming in the elementary level at grade two, to push that down to kindergarten. And I think that would have a dual benefit for the students in giving them more time to prepare and enjoy for a, a life of not being afraid of the water. And also academically, you're, you're taking kids away from their academic time in second grade when you're getting ready for it to be a testing year versus kindergarten when you don't have that added academic pressure. And I, I don't see the logic in doing the swimming in second grade versus, versus earlier. And I would support, you know, at least looking into getting our kids to the Y in kindergarten versus second grade for that reason.
I support that too. Mr. Conca?
I, I think it's worth considering, but I, you know, I'm guessing that the Y picked second grade because that's the most, they feel like that's when students are most ready to do it, and probably it's most safe. But I, I don't know that for a fact, but, but, you know, it's certain, you know, we have to remember the YMCA does this for us for free.
Yeah.
And, and I'm guessing that we would give them some prerogative on who they wanted to give swimming lessons to. So, you know, I think it's.
I'd like it to be a discussion.
I, I think it's worth considering, certainly Dr. Jones can talk to the YMCA people and find out, you know, what their thought is. I've, I've got some concerns about swimming, I really do. My major concern is, you know, how does this gel, or how does this interface with all the competitive leagues and all the competitive events that are already going on out there? And, and what advantage do we gain, or does an individual gain by having, being on a high school team? I mean, when I read the swimmers of the, you know, in a red paper last year, the, the swimmers of the year, all those were club team people, it looked like to me. I didn't see many high school students mentioned at all. They, they may swim duly for their high school team and for a club team. So I'm not opposed to it, but I, but I do have some questions about, you know, when it comes, when push comes to shove, are they going to represent Powhatan High School, or are they going to represent Nova, some of the, some of the sport, if they have to make a choice, I mean, some of, some organization, if they have to make a choice, similarly to what our people in soccer and other schools have to do at this point. So, you know, and again, it's just a question I have, I'm not opposed to swimming. I, I do have some concerns, though, about meets. You know, yeah, when you, when you compete against another school, there probably is not going to be a cost. But just like a lot of other sports that we participate in, there are a lot of invitational meets that do cost. And, you know, I think we need to, we need to clarify who's going to pay for those invitational meet costs when they do come up. You know, I, I'm just familiar with cross country, and I know that, you know, we spend as much mu, we spend as much time going to invitational meets as we do competing against other schools. And, and some of those meets do cost a fair amount of money, and the team at this point is raising their own money towards that. And if swimming is going to do that, that's fine, but, you know, we do need to understand that. And I think we also need to be cognizant of the fact that at some point, the YMCA may say, we don't have a space for you. And what are we going to do if we get to that point when we don't have a space? Just something for us to think about. You know, I think right now, all the ducks seem like they're lined and everything's in a, everything is there, but, but I've been in this business long enough to know that some, you know, that we start out thinking everything is right and everything is good, but then we get down the road a little ways and all, you know, we, we run into a bump or hiccup we didn't anticipate. And each one of these sports we do costs us, you know, ends up costing us money. We want to provide opportunities for students, but I do think that just, you know, there are my questions, you know, about swimming, and, you know, and I'm not asking. We want to provide opportunities for students, but I do think that just, you know, they're my questions, you know, about swimming. And, you know, and I'm not asking for anybody to answer my questions tonight, it's just information I'd like to know because when somebody asks me, you know, what's the advantage of swimming in high school as opposed to swimming for Nova or some other, another, a swim club down in Richmond? You know, I, I want to know the answer to that.
Good points, Mr. Cole, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones. This brings us to a public comment period. If there's anybody that wishes to address the board on any subject, there's a three-minute time limit per individual, five minutes per group. If you do approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement, I will close the public comment period. Now, we do have some closed session items on the agenda tonight. Mr. Cole, could you make a motion to take us into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we go into closed session pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the employment resignation and leave of specific employees and pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A2 and A4 to discuss the expulsion and school placement of specific students. Codes 2.2-3711A1, A2, and A4.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're temporarily in closed session until further notice, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Cole, we read the certification.
Yes, sir, just give me a second to get back to it, I'm reading it here. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, where is the Powhatan, Powhatan County Board? Powhatan County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, it would be resolved that the Powhatan County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Aye.
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 Okay, we're now back in open session, and this brings us to a round of next steps or follow-up items. So let's start with Mr. Walters. Do you have any next steps or follow-up items for Dr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll hold until the end of the regular meeting, if that's all right.
Okay. And Ms. Ayers?
Same thing.
Ms. Emo?
Same.
Mr. Cole?
Same thing.
All right, I will follow suit, and that brings us to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn, 5 o'clock.